We're ready now to start our regular school board meeting for Tuesday, March the 21st, 2023. It is 3:30 PM and we will have our pledge of allegiance led by Mr. David Buckles and our invocation by Reverend Carl Ian Smith. I mean Reverend Carl Ian Flack. I took Gina Boy's name, forgive me. You know I know you.
All right, repeat after me. A pledge of allegiance to the flag.
... of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Let us bow our heads and reverence our hearts to God. Gracious Lord, it is once more and again that we bow before your throne of grace and mercy. We call upon you because there's none else that can heal all of our souls' diseases. There's none but you that can lead and guide this district school board, our superintendent, all of our administrative officials, each of our school principals and assistant principals and guidance counselors and every instructor and those who are paraprofessionals in each of our schools. Lord, we pray for the students, we pray for the parents, we pray for those who are the guardians of our children. For Lord, we're living in such crucial times now that every knee must bow to you in order for us to get together and gain all that we need so that our district can operate in excellence. And Lord, through all of the decisions that must be made and all of the information that must be perused and the discernment that is needed by these officials, we pray that each of them will touch the hem of your garment. We pray that each of them will not only work together but intentionally do what is pleasing in your sight so that this district not only survives but that this district thrives. Bless us now even in the days to come as these decisions are made now with far-reaching effects for our future. We pray for the harmony, the unity, the guidance that is needed that we may do those things that are pleasing in your sight. Lord, we thank you for the labors of love. We thank you for the sacrifices that are made on every level. God, we lift our bus drivers. We lift those cafeteria and dietary workers. God, we lift everyone that makes this district effective. Dear God, we pray now that you will cause us to operate in the spirit of excellence in such a manner that this district moves forward, moves our students forward. And God, even the major capital improvements that are on the horizon, Lord, we pray for wisdom that everyone that's concerned will not have ulterior motives but will have superior motives that we can do what needs to be done. Bless us all. Keep us all like only you can. We will give you praise, glory, and honor in the midst of it all and through it all. In Christ's name we pray and we all said amen.
Amen.
And it's been brought to my attention Pastor Flack that we did lose two educators for the Putnam County School District. One was my mentor Kelly Smith, Elmerita School, Mrs. Evelyn S. Green, that I credit a lot of who I am as an educator. She molded and helped shape me and put me on the right path. And then Mrs. Strickland, that was also an educator. And so if we would just hold for a moment of silence, I would appreciate that in reverence to their service to our children. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Flack. And tell Gina Boy what I did.
Thank you, Reverend Flack.
Do we have any public comments? Longer given? Okay, at this time we're ready for our public hearing regarding items one and two, adoption amendment to policies 2520, and the list is there. So if we can get someone.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we... Did it have anybody? Nobody wanted to come forward to speak, so I'll make a motion that we adopt or recommend adoption of item number one, adoption amendments to policies 2520, 5111.01, 5350, 6325, 8330, 8405, 8405.02, per Neola special update, November 2022.
I'll second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. David Buckles that we will propose an adoption of the amendment policies that were listed as he called them out, and it was seconded by Mrs. Holly Pickens. All right, any questions, comments?
Is this a roll call?
All right, you're ready.
District one.
Adopt.
District two.
Adopt.
District three.
Adopt.
District four.
Adopt.
And five.
Adopt.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I would move approval of adoption of the new policy number 5865 per the special update recommendation.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Phil Leary that we adopt policy number 5865 per Neola special updates, November 2022. Any questions, comments prior to doing the roll call? I did have a concern as I read it. I wanted to make sure where we as a district stood. It gave you boxes to check whether we could have our identity, restrooms, restroom wherein they would be catered to a child's chosen identity or whatever. And the superintendent took care of that for me, and so I'm satisfied. So be ready.
District one.
Adopt.
Adopt.
Three.
Adopt.
Four.
Adopt.
And five.
Adopt.
Okay, that takes care of that. Thank you all so much. We're now going to our consent agenda. We'll start with you, Mr. Leary.
Madam Chairman, I do not have anything to pull.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mrs. Wagner?
I believe I would like to pull F2, please, deletion of fixed assets.
I meant with superintendent yesterday and staff, and I feel good about where we are, so I'm good.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Buckles. Mrs. Pickens?
I had my questions answered. Thank you, though. I have nothing.
All right, can we get a motion for the ones?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion. We pass a consent agenda as presented minus F2, deletion of fixed assets.
I'll second it.
All right, motion by Mr. David Buckles that we accept the consent agenda minus F2, deletion of fixed
Assets.
Assets. And it was seconded by Mrs. Holly Pickens. All right, all in favor? Any questions, anything else they have? All right, all in favor? Let it be known by I.
Aye.
Opposeds here and none, our motion carries. All right, Mrs. Wagner?
Just on the deletion, I've been working with Ms. Odom on some questions I had on that, and she's gotten... She got back with me a few moments ago. I did get some of my questions answered, but I would like some additional time to converse with her a little bit more on that before... And part of my concerns are certain items that are listed as being junked. And I'm just wanting to know the whys behind some of this or maybe the process behind some of it because some of them are... I understand old items, you know, they do have to go, and I've been informed many items are auctioned off to get money back to the district, which is great. Some of these items I felt were quite new, a little too new to be discarded, so I'm working with her to get those answers, just seeing if we could get a little more time on that.
Okay.
Could we do it now? I mean, or is it something?
I think she probably wants to table it.
That's what I...
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
All right, so you're asking, table. Okay.
Yes, please.
Wrote the code for me, thank you.
All right.
Is it a motion?
Yes.
Well, I move to table item F2, the deletion of fixed assets, to a later date.
I'll second that.
All right, motion by Mrs. Linda Wagner that we table item F2, deletion of fixed assets, and it was seconded by Mr. David Buckles.
Before we vote, can I ask Superintendent one question? Do you know if this has already been contracted to... for somebody to auction it off? Have we already paid somebody?
Can you address that?
I think this is after the auction has already occurred. I've got Josh here with me. Horace is out on vacation this week, so he's glad for the tabling.
Okay, okay.
The auction has already occurred.
I'm good. She can call for a vote.
And then we can, whatever questions you have besides that, we can talk and then, you know, maybe bring this back up to the next meeting.
Sure, sure.
But you're going to get with Josh and Horace and Heather's questions answered.
Okay, so we...
Get IT involved too because some of these items were IT items.
Okay.
And so it's still tabled and will show up again on the next agenda. So now, anything further? Are we ready to vote?
Ready to vote.
All right, all in favor of tableing item F2? Let it be known by I.
Aye.
Opposeds here and none, our motion carries. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, if I may, on...
Yes, ma'am.
Before the consent agenda on section F is brought to vote, I need to recuse myself on voting from item F5.
Oh, we've already...
We've already voted.
We've already.
On the whole section of...
Yes, ma'am. See, the only thing that was four was yours, so we... Everything went.
Oh, the entire...
Yes, ma'am.
You can just file a conflict form.
That's fine. I've got the form. This was the first time I had to address that, so...
You just let me know what... I'll bring you whatever to put you in jail for.
To get out of jail, free car.
It's basically just to avoid any appearance. We don't believe there's actually a conflict.
I know that you and our board attorney have had a conversation about it.
So, in essence, Mrs. Wagner, you're stating that you abstained from voting on F5 even though previously you did vote yes on the...
Yes, thank you.
So, for the record, you abstained from voting for that particular item.
So, then the motion would be four one? No, just four.
Four, four zero.
Just four, zero.
On that one item.
On that one item, and you made it.
Yes, on F2.
So you made a record of it.
Okay. All right, we are now in emergency session. We have, I think it's two items, the instructional empowerment, and is it that pronounced? Serious interpreting?
You've got serious interpreting and service agreement, and you've got professional and technical services.
Yes, yes. Okay, those are the two. So we look in now.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept item one on the emergency items, professional and technical services, dash instructional empowerment, Inc., justification, explanation time sensitive.
I'll second that.
All right, motion by Mr. David Buckles that we accept item number one under the emergency item, the instructional empowerment, and it was seconded by Mrs. Holly Pickens. Open for discussion. Any questions, comments regarding? Are we ready to vote? All in favor? Let it be known by I.
Aye.
Opposeds here and none, our motion carries.
Madam Chairman, I would make a motion to accept item L2 as an emergency item and move for approval of the serious interpreting service agreement based on time sensitive.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been motioned by Mr. Phil Leary that we accept emergency item L2, the serious interpreting agreement, and it was seconded by Mr. David Buckles. Any questions? Discussion? Are we ready to vote? All in favor? Let it be known by I.
Aye.
Opposeds here and none, our motion carries. We are now out of emergency session, and we move now we have no unfinished business. And under new business items, we have one consensus to advertise amendment of policy 5330, use of medications.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we agree to advertise the amendment policy... Amendment of policy 5330.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mrs. Holly Pickens that we accept item N1 consensus to advertise the amendment of policy 5330, use of medications, and it was seconded by Mr. David Buckles. Any questions? Open for this session.
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
The... I have no problem with the amendment, but the word refuses, I felt, was simple. I don't know if that's a standard language stating that the school board refuses to allow certain things, or if there's a little bit more soft language. Is that a possibility to modify that?
We talked about that. We'd have to... We could send that back to Neil.
Yeah.
That was one... Okay. So, yeah, yeah. We can get back with our staff and adjust that language.
We can, as a board, we can change it if we, by majority vote, if it comes back that that needs to be changed.
I just... It appears... It seems like this would be a policy that parents would actually be looking at potentially, considering what it deals with, and it just sounds a little antagonistic that... To state that the school board is refusing something does not approve of or will not allow, I think the language could be a little...
Let me ask our board attorney. Can they go ahead and do the consensus advertise, and we can make that adjustment, or do we need to table that until we come back with it?
Because we pay Neola to do the Northeast Florida consortium to keep us coherent with current law, and I don't know that that's, like Rick says, until...
Well, this language is actually ours.
Oh, okay. Okay, I thought it was her now.
Okay, I thought it was Neola.
Through our student services.
I mean, they can approve it to advertise with the correct language. If I will discuss the language, now I can change it.
Well, I would prefer it be not tied to refuse unless it comes before the board and the majority of the board refuse something.
Now, now, is... Because I made me some notes on mine. Parent must administer, we taking the neutral, non-regulated herbals. Is this where it is with the... Because I don't have my paper before me with the strong drugs.
Yes, yes.
Yes, see, and that's it. I wouldn't want to.
It just says since it's... The school board refuses to allow school personnel to administer such substances. I just think maybe softening it to state that the school board will not allow school personnel to administer.
Okay.
Yeah.
What about will not?
Well, I think if the attorney, our other... Our attorney goes ahead and finds latitude, and I think we can find common ground because if you had a child who had been exposed to pick up a dollar bill that's got fentanyl on it, and we had Narcan at school, you would have to... You just have to go ahead and give Narcan, and you would have to do the best you can. So, and that's just a hypothetical, but...
This is parents. They tell the parents that...
I understand, but it's...
Like it's a key to something.
They... The school... The teacher wouldn't want to have to give the child medicine.
Right. But this particular line talks about non-regulated herbal or natural substances, so it's not talking about...
Madam Chair, our attorney has a recommendation to clarify the language.
Perhaps the school district will not permit school personnel?
Yeah, and we have not allowed, so all...
Sorry, I was trying to find it in here.
Good, great.
Sure.
Okay.
The school district will not permit or will not...
Permits, right.
Yeah.
Will not permit school personnel.
If you have a consensus, just agree to it.
Okay. Does everyone want to see it in writing? Because I know it's hard to visualize something.
No, we've been looking at it.
You've been looking? Okay.
Yes, and thank you so much. All right, so then we vote consensus to make that change from refusal to will not permit.
So do I have to withdraw the first motion?
You can do it by consensus.
We're going to do it by consensus. All right, all in favor? Let it be known by I. Opposeds here and none. Thank you.
Yeah.
And no, 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 no. I'm saying good. Good, you saved us.
Because Wagner's checking our grammar and our spelling, so we appreciate that. We want to have... And I mean that positively, and I think that's good, so thank you.
I know. I always apologize for being that way, but it is just extremely important to me as a school board that our documents are...
Well, we're an educational institution, and we need to set the example, so kudos to you for doing that.
But we need to vote. We did... Did we do that?
Oh, we didn't do the vote to advertise. We just agreed.
We're so focused on changing, and now we have to vote for the approval, the overall resolution.
I remember when I pulled it, she needs to make a motion.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Phil Leary that we adopt...
I think we need to move again, perhaps, just in advance of caution.
Just faded all over. He did, but go ahead. He took the user out.
Oh, we have to say it again?
Yes, yes. She said to keep us safe.
So I move that we have agreed to support advertising amendment of policy number 55, 5330, use of medications.
As revised.
As revised.
Yes.
I'll second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Phil Leary that we vote to advertise amendment of policy 5330, use of medication with the amended wording, and seconded by Mrs. Linda Wagner. Any further questions? All right, are we ready to vote? All in favor? Let it be known by I.
Aye.
Opposeds here and none, our motion carries. Thank you. All righty, we are now ready for our reports from the board members, the attorney and our superintendent. We're going to start with you, Mrs. Pickens, since you started.
Okay, I don't have a whole lot. I hope everyone enjoyed their spring break and came back ready to finish out the year on a real positive, strong note. Don't forget to support our spring sports, and we've had a lot of tragedy in South Putnam, and I just want to encourage everyone to drive with the abundance of caution and care and, you know, maybe even go a little slower and watch out for the guy next to you a little bit more. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mrs. Pickens, Mr. Buckles?
Same as what Holly said. One of my big concerns right now is the uptick in accidents in Putnam County. I don't know, given the nature of the use of cell phones and speed limits and more people moving to Florida, it just seems like we're being inundated with accidents. And I've talked at length with the superintendent. He shares my same concerns. So I know he's working on, you know, everybody that'll listen to him, and we are talking to people as well to try to be cautious. So it never seems to fail that we lose children every year at graduation, and I'm just hoping we don't encounter that again this year. It's a sad note, but I just... I don't know what people... I've listened to them today talking about some of the accidents, and Holly, what she's talking about was just horrible. But it's happening too often, so anything we can do as a board, Superintendent, let us know if you need any help with anything.
Appreciate that.
All right. And spring sports and the fair, get out and see the kids.
I see the pictures of the softball games that you and Mr. Leary exchanged with each other and sent to us.
Well, Phil's... He's old. He's got grandchildren in the school, like I do, so...
Not in the high school yet, but I would like to say I did outlast Mr. Buckles at the game the other night. It was cold.
Oh, it was cold.
I outlasted him for about 15 minutes.
All righty, Mrs. Wagner?
I would, the third in a row, reiterate, please drive careful. I was on my way here today and passed a wreck that had apparently just happened, and I was worried all the way here that, you know, I saw the man in his vehicle, and I was just concerned for his safety. And it is... I lost a client to a head-on collision a month or so ago, and he left behind a five-year-old child. So we really have to talk to our family members in the community about driving more carefully. It's not just about children. It's about our parents and our... Just our whole community. That being said, I did, a week ago, I did attend the new board member training, part two, in Tallahassee. It was very enlightening. And I was also able to hear some state legislators speak at a side reception. It was very interesting to get the different perspectives on some of the educational issues. I was not there at legislative days, but I was able to hear some of the various legislators, and it was just a very enjoyable, much shorter training, but it was a very enjoyable training and just an overall good trip, so.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. All right, and I just, as always, want to say thank you to those that have served Putnam County students and are retiring. Ms. Gail, how do you say Gail's last name?
Doggrin.
Doggrin. All right, all these years I would see, and I just call her Ms. Gail, Ms. Gail Doggrin, for 32 years. Perry Yates for 34 years, Shirley Bickers 26 years and four months, and Mary Kay Walsh Talbot for 17 years and nine months. And I pray that they just have an enjoyable retirement. And after they've been out a year, and if they decide to come back, we'll take them back. Just want to commend this district as a whole on how giving and caring and concerned we are for each other, even though the outsiders may say that we are poverty-stricken or whatever terms they may use to describe us. Every time you come to this office, something is happening to assist and to help those that may be in need, the jelly and all of that stuff. Ms. Piscatella, she's just great at what she does and giving. And then the support of the mother for gas to get to her daughter that was involved in the hit-and-run in Crescent City, just outpouring of love in your hearts. And that's why a lot of us are still here, not so much the grandkids. We love them, but it's because this is a great place to live and to work and to raise your children. Madam Attorney?
That's okay.
And you know what happened? I said he went first, but he went first on the consent agenda. Keep me straight, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I appreciate it. First of all, I would like to reiterate, you know, all our kids that are in 4H and FFA in our schools across the county have done an incredible job. Have been out there since this weekend. And the swine shows tonight, the heifer and steer show's Thursday night, and then the sale is Friday night. Please come, support these kids. They work hard, and believe me, it's an expensive proposition. The other thing I want to mention is that, you know, I obviously keep up with the press clips and what's happening in Tallahassee, and I was just furious this week at a comment that Representative Massimino, I guess that's how you pronounce his name, you know, made about the bill on universal vouchers. And not that I'm for not helping people that, you know, want to look at alternatives, but that's, as the superintendent and Mr. Bowlin and I talked a couple weeks ago, that is going to be very significantly detrimental to us from an economic standpoint. And his comment about competition of public schools just infuriated me to the point where I guess I might have to go back up there. But, you know, it's ironic that how stupid these legislators are when they make comments like that from the standpoint of you look at what our teachers, our administrators and administration are doing, and the educational opportunities and the educations, the kids that want to get an education, get in the county, and it's just this competition thing is just crazy. The other thing I'd like to point out is, and maybe see if we can get some board action on this, in Mr. Doolan's report today, there is a change. They're looking at maybe eliminating FEFP and other funding programs within the budget, the overall education budget, that definitely are going to impact small schools. And I actually sent an email to Representative Payne and Senator Hudson saying, I know you guys aren't going to let this happen, but believe me, it's very serious. And so, you know, I'd like to make a motion that the board, through the superintendent, do a letter to our legislators, you know, opposing those changes, because I'm telling you, it's, you know, and I've seen it over the years, you know, it's always a pendulum in this battle between small school districts and large school districts on funding. And of course, now, the pendulum is swinging... and, and of course now, the pendulum is swinging the other way, which I was just flabbergasted at, since the Speaker of the House represents a rural district in Flagler County, but, you know, some really not good things happening out there.
Phil, you're spot on, I had a conversation briefly about that similar thing with, with the superintendent yesterday, and, and one of his staff, you know, fortunately, we have, he, he serves by virtue of us being the fiscal agent for the Northeast Florida Consortium, an availability of working with these other consortium districts, because when they go and they pass those rules, they're, they're, they're meant to send a message to Broward and Dade and these big ones where they're at war with, with the big mega-union groups, and, and they don't realize that we have, things we're dealing with here are just totally different, and, you know, it's about like, but, but if, as the superintendent does that, he likewise tries to reach out and, and bring the cohesiveness of, all the way to the Panhandle area consortium, Rick, if you can work out with them to try to maybe garner strength on that, because everything is, who's not for parents wanting to have a right to send their child to a school where they want them to go, but it, it, what cost do you do to the rural districts, you're just destroying...
We actually met yesterday, we had a board meeting yesterday, and had exactly that same conversation, and, and, you know, they're talking about doing away with the DCD, just because differential, which, you're right, would impact small districts, some of our small districts in our consortium would be heavily impacted, we, we would be less impacted, but it, it just depends on the district, so, but, you know, we, we will do whatever the board determines, and, you know, we, we do work with our lobbyists, our, our own lobbyists here, but also the NEFA lobbyist keeps us abreast on a daily basis, so we are definitely on it.
Well, I, I know you will be, and I... And I guess I'm somewhat concerned in, in the reports I receive, Steve, and you all get them from the School Boards Association, that what's their lobbyist doing, I mean, all, all she's doing is reporting what's happening, where, which you can read the press clips, and are, are they really out there working, and I know it's a, you know, they represent all, all but four school districts in the state, but...
You're trying to say we're getting a bank, well...
Exactly, I mean, I'm, and, you know, I'm a little more critical since I've worked in the process for twenty-five years, but I, I just, I wonder if they're really out there, you know, if, if these, you know, you've got a number of legislators that are in leadership positions like ours, that they ought to be killing this stuff, I mean, there's just no reason to have this, certainly at this point in time, when you, you, it's a compounding effect of universal vouchers and cutting these budgetary programs that, I mean, I'm telling you, it, it's going to be...
Some years ago, some, some school districts broke off from the Florida School Board Association, I don't know if they still are, I don't know if they came back, it doesn't really matter to me, I mean, but it, they're, they're treated like they're the enemy by prevailing leadership, and, and not just Florida, but all throughout, depending on your point of view, and I, I don't see that in all schools, do I like everything I see across America that happened? No, no, I don't like to see some things that happen that people don't like, and that you hear criticism on the news about school districts, but, you know, I think in rural America, we're trying to fight for the values that, that we were raised with, but I, I, they don't have a lobbyist that gets it and fights, now, Bill Monford is the head of the Superintendent's Association, he, he still is the head, and he's, the, the association essentially ran him to be a state senator, so that's the only key the School Board Association would have, would be to put more people in power to impact leadership.
So, so how would we do, do a, a letter, I mean, which all the school board members would sign, to our, you know, our legislative delegation, and to the Speaker and Senate President?
I would think the superintendent should reach out to, to, he could get with you and maybe talk to Bobby Payne to begin with.
Right, he's talked to Bobby.
Well, you know, but...
Well, the, the concern I have is that the way that that works is, is each lieutenant in the House, and then the captains in the Senate and under the Senate President, they have their own silos in the budget, and if you're not, that education's not your budget silo, then you really don't have any influence on that, no matter what, and so Bobby's is, is transportation and economic development, and Travis's, I'm not sure what Travis's is, Hudson, but what I'm saying is, we need to be on the record, you know, that we are opposed to that, I mean, the universal voucher things are done deal, it's, it's, it's gone, but these other things, you know, compound that significantly.
You being, your experience in lobbying is, is very beneficial to what we need to do, so we need to, we need to let, Rick, get us a, go ahead and formulate a letter, like you're saying, let the superintendent compose it, and, and, and then let him continue to work, and then you, I think doors and avenues will open, but right now, I think leadership's being, telling them what to do and what to vote for, and if you don't, you won't, your money's cut off.
I want to clarify, do I hear that, and I'm asking the board, a letter to our legislative delegation based on our concerns about specifically the FEFP, the change in the FEFP, and, and I think the, you know, the voucher thing is kind of, kind of horseshit off the bar.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, I'll be, and I, we can do a draft, and then maybe, maybe you and I can talk, and then we do draft with the other board members, get their input, and then we can send it out.
Well, and I know that there's a, the rural county days, but that's in April, I mean, everything's going to be done by then, I mean, we need to, we need to get them...
And our next board meeting isn't until April eighteenth.
We need to get it done now, and...
We can work on that tomorrow, Susan and I can get together and work on a draft, and share the draft with y'all, and then give us input, and then we'll be from there, if that's all right?
Right, and we don't have to...
I mean, one caution, we, we do have a special facilities project that we want to get funded at the state level, so, you know, the wording of that letter should be done very carefully.
Yes, sir.
We're, we're locked, we're, we're locked, the universal vouchers on our funding for that, it's locked, and the reason is because the appropriations chair in the House is running for the Senate, and guess what district he has, Putnam County, so I'm not worried about that, I just don't, I don't think these legislators understand the impact to the small districts, and I mean, it was pretty well laid out in Mr. Doolan's email to us today, and I encourage you to go back there and really look at that.
Well, we will be very diplomatic, is that the right word, just to, yeah, we, and, and Mr. Bowlin is spot on, we want to make sure that we don't come across as, you know, being...
Spitting in their face.
Yeah, yeah, we definitely, we, we just, we're offering suggestions, okay?
Yes.
And our, stating our...
That we are concerned.
Yeah, but we definitely want to make sure that we are, we have big fish to fry, so to speak, too.
But I know you, as the chairman of the NEFA, has, has a long arm of comrades that could join you, and, you know, you put all those districts together, and they make a big district, but I just, you know what to do.
Yeah, and, and it might be, we can talk, maybe it could be something that we could, you know, send something to NEFA and just, you know, maybe let them...
They're, I'm sure their district would feel the same way.
Yeah.
I haven't talked to Patrick, but I got a call from him.
Yeah, so we'll talk, and then we'll communicate, you know, just do some drafts to y'all, but we, we definitely, to Thomas's point, you know, we have a lot riding on some things this year in Tallahassee, so we definitely want to be...
Absolutely.
Workable.
I don't see it getting any better anytime soon.
There, there are some bigger forces out there.
That are going to impact us for the next...
Well, the big forces are not, is even outside Florida, I don't think it's...
Yeah, they're out of Florida, yeah.
And a, a nationwide thing going on, so...
You are correct, sir.
Yeah. But thank you, Mr. Leary.
All right. Madam Chief, uh, Attorney.
Uh, I don't think we're recording this time, but thank you for coming on to my concern.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, I have several things, and these are, I think, things that you'll be very interested in, first of all, our product of Putnam, you know, it's that time of year, and this has got to be a really exciting thing, but we recognize our, our graduates who are now serving in our county, anywhere in our county, in different career categories, and, you know, the first year we did that, what, four or five years ago, you know, we kind of had to encourage people to apply and all that, but now, we have probably thirty people already nominated, and we're still taking nominations, I think the end of the month, if somebody can correct me, is the deadline, so we're still, and it's on our website, so we're still taking applications, and then we get the chamber and the newspaper to kind of, you know, go through there as a committee, and, and then they send us back names, and then we recognize these people at graduation ceremonies from the school, from where they graduated, but that's a great signal to send our own students, like, this is who you can be, come back and work in Putnam County, so, we're having our second, I think it's our second community forum scheduled, we just scheduled this for, if you'll make a note of this, April eleventh, at six P.M. at the Sea Low Cafeteria, and that will be both live, and I believe, unless Ashley tells me wrong, is going to be, we are going to protect that, or...
It'll be face-to-face.
Just, just face-to-face, okay, and Ashley will be sending out something where people can send questions to her, and then our staff will answer those ahead of time, and then, like we've done in the past, but, again, this is our second semester version of that, so that's been very popular, and, yeah, I've already mentioned the hog show tonight, I've got two grandkids showing hogs, so I'll, I'll definitely be out there, yeah, I was joking with my grandson, he, he showed a hog a couple years ago, and I said, you may not have the fattest hog, but you got the fastest, because it took off when it came out of the chute, but anyway, I think he's got a, a better workable hog this year, but it's a good, it's good to see our kids involved in agriculture.
Absolutely.
I was actually over today, we had the civic luncheon, had all the people in the county had lunch, and had a speaker there talking about agriculture, and we, we need to encourage our kids to continue supporting agriculture, and, you know, he was joking, he said, a lot of our kids think that our food is grown at Wind Dixie, no, Wind Dixie doesn't grow up food, they, they sell the food that's grown, but we need to understand that our agriculture is still very important, and now, I want to, I want to announce the, the members of the Putnam County School District Bond Oversight Committee, and I know we've been in contact with y'all throughout the week, and as you know, they apply, they had the opportunity to apply or nominate somebody, and that closed out, what, the fifteenth, Ashley, something like that, so since then, we contacted each of you with that master list, and you gave us your two choices, and if you chose somebody that somebody else had, we ask you to make another selection, so let me announce this, and, by the way, this, the first meeting of the Bond Oversight Committee will, will be held Wednesday, April nineteenth, in this very room, from six to eight P.M., and, you know, we do have a policy that they will follow, and I'm sure they'll select their own leadership and all that, but we will be, be updating them and providing information there for that committee, and that's an extremely important committee, just for the transparency of what we're doing with our bond, so, by the way, if you hadn't heard, we're building two or three schools this summer, so that's going to be really timely, okay, Ms. Gilyard has selected her two are Cynthia Asia and Courtney De Souza, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm doing these by board members, so everybody knows, Mr. Leary has selected Jared Dollar and Jackie Porter, correct? And, let's see, I'm skipping around here, Ms. Pickens has selected J.R. Grimes, Keith Grimes, from the Crescent City area, and also, she selected John Newbold, who's a former school board member, longtime South Putnam individual, let's see, Ms. Wagner has selected Allegra Kitchens and Amy Stanley, okay, for her selection, and Mr. Buckles has selected Dr. Thomas Hunter and Wayne McLean, so, did I hit everybody?
Yes.
Okay, and then my selection was Ben Bates and Danny Martinez, so that's our twelve, and I'm very happy with those selections, I think they will do good, good selection, good cross-section of the county, and again, they serve a three-year term, they'll basically oversee the expenditure of the bond over the next three years, and then we'll get into phase two, so, thank you guys for selecting them, and very anxious to see what they do, so, Madam Chair, that's all I have.
Okay, is there anything else to come before the board?
I would just like to congratulate Tim Ross on his hundredth, I think now, one-hundredth and one victory in baseball.
Oh, okay, congratulations, Tim Ross, okay, anything else to come before us, if not?